Trustee Fenton.
Here.
Trustee Dodge.
Here.
Trustee Calandrello.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Getzinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of September 21st, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of September 21st, 2020.
Second.
Any questions, comments, call roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Before I read the proclamation, I'd like to give Lisa Malloy from the Crisis Center a chance to speak briefly. Use that podium there.
Hi, my name is Lisa Malloy. I'm the Special Events and Engagement Manager at the Crisis Center for South Suburbia. We are a domestic violence shelter. We also have been around for over 41 years. We were started by Diane Masters. Some of you may remember her. And she started out a shelter to bring in all of the victims of domestic violence and their children. We do education, we do emergency shelter, and we always welcome the support of our area, the villages in our area. We have helped over 40,000 people in the 40-plus years that we've been around, pretty close to the population of Orland Park. And we very much welcome support from our constituents in the area and also local businesses. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we are bringing forth a campaign called 30 Wonderful Ways. We welcome everybody to please join us on social media in spreading the word about domestic violence. We are having several area restaurants hold fundraisers. We encourage people to come out and try to support us in that way. And there are a lot of other ways that you can support us. We actually have two boutique resale shops that account for 30% of our income. And they are welcoming volunteers to come and do for our shifts, different days during the week. We have the Neat Repeat Store in Orland Park, and there's also a Neat Repeat Store in Worth, so we're very local. And I just encourage everybody to please share and keep an eye out for those neighbors, friends, relatives, that might not reach out every day. There are staggering statistics about domestic violence. One in four women will be a victim of domestic violence in their lifetime, one in 10 men, and countless children in those families. So I want to take a minute to thank the mayor and the village and the Board of Trustees for recognizing this. And I hope everybody will share and do a little bit in this month to reflect and make sure that the people that you love are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And for those that don't know, the Crisis Center is a wonderful, wonderful cause, a wonderful charity. And domestic violence, you know, COVID comes at a real cost. You know, these lockdowns, keeping people locked up, has really had an impact, and that's nowhere has it seen. And I see the chief back there nodding his head in our 911 calls related to domestic violence and the number of calls we've had to deal with. I think it's, what, eightfold from last year? Domestic violence that we have to deal with. So it has a real cost. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why, you know, myself and this board has worked so hard to try and get things open, because we need, mental health and all of that has a big impact on all of these issues, particularly domestic violence. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all the people who donated during our first concert. So as some of you know, the Crisis Center was a recipient of the donations that we received that day. So thank you, thank you all for doing that. And with that, I'd like to make a proclamation in recognition of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence remains a pervasive issue across the United States and the world with implications for personal and community health. And whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas considering medical expenses, loss productivity, legal costs, and property loss and damage, domestic violence costs victims nearly $82,000 over their lifetime and collectively costs the United States $3.6 trillion. And whereas research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and care for one another can reduce incidents of domestic violence. And whereas every day in Orland Park, individuals and organizations play a part in supporting people impacted by domestic violence, providing services including therapeutic, legal, educational, housing, advocacy, and medical services. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Pico and the Village of Orland Park Board of Trustees hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Orland Park, Illinois, and urge all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community, dated this fifth day of October 2020. Thanks, Lisa.
Accounts payable from September 22nd, 2020 to October 5th, 2020.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable from September 22nd, 2020 to October 5th, 2020 in the amount of $4,204,569.40.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I have to recuse, I have a business customer on the list.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Motion carries six oh.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for September 18th, 2020 approval. Item B, police protective equipment purchase approval. Item C, Avon air purifying respirators, police protective equipment purchase and budget amendment approval. Item D, assignment of one sworn police officer to the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA Task Force Chicago Division approval. Item E, playground safety surfacing installation proposal. Item F, foreclosed property registration, property registration champions. Item G, PACE 2020 certification and assurances approval. Item H, First Amendment to the Oaklawn Regional Water System Ordinance. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through H of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calandrello.
I just want to move number E just for a comment. Do you kind of make the comment now? It's up to you. With that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through H with the exception of E.
Second.
Call roll. Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calandrello.
I move to approve the proposal from Homer Industries LLC dated August 7th, 2020 for the purchase of installation, of installation, excuse me, of playground safety surfacing at the cost not to exceed $18,800.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Calandrello.
Just a couple of things. This is just the typical wood chips you're talking about, right?
That's correct. So these are the, these are the approved, these are the approved wood chips for playgrounds.
And I guess I just want to comment for the future, for the budget, since it's coming up sooner or later. I would like to see this, the analysts of going to a little more safer surfaces like the recycled rubber, or what we can do, especially for maybe some of the regional parks to get hard hit or use harder. I think it's safer, I believe, to mine outage. Also, I think it's a better place surface. As a parent who's on playgrounds probably five times a week with two little ones, it's definitely a difference. And I know some of our parks have at least the landing pads that are rubber, and then it goes into a surface. So when we talk about redeveloping parks, something that we, I would like to see the numbers and see what we can do with. That's all.
We'll, we'll get a cost comparison.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call roll.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Stans Donuts and Coffee Backfill Vacant Restaurant Incentive Program Inducement Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Getzinas.
I move to approve a sales tax sharing inducement agreement with Stans Donuts as outlined above pending approval of appearance review and building permits.
Second. Any comments? So that everyone's aware, this is, Stans Donuts is taking advantage of the, the economic incentive that the board approved for backfilling restaurant space. So this is something we approved, I don't know, back in April, May timeframe as part of the COVID and COVID relief. And so we have Stans Donuts, a longtime Chicago favorite, filling the PDQ site. Call roll. Mr. Mayor, if I could, if Ed could introduce, we have some folks here from Stans. Okay, great.
All right, we have some representatives here from Stans Donuts. They wanted to make some, if you want me to go over the terms of the agreement, I can't.
They have donuts.
Okay. They're here to make some comments in regards to the project, and we're happy to welcome to Orland Park.
Feel free.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also brought along some donuts for you and cookies. So just want to go over our, I don't know if you're familiar with Stans or not, but Stans, my name is Rich Labriola. I used to have a wholesale bakery, bakery in Alsup. Grew up in Blue Island, so I'm very familiar with the South Suburbs of Orland Park. We've been looking at the PDQ site probably over a year, and obviously we have decided on it. And just want to tell you a little bit about what we do. It's, it's not only a donut shop. I mean, I think you'll see in the renderings that it's something really special. And our build outs are expensive because we don't want to feel like you're just going into a donut shop. It's somewhere that, similar to Starbucks, to come in, use Wi-Fi, hang around, and also enjoy donuts and coffee. We're really big on our coffee. It's not just our donuts. We do fresh made cookies in-house. The drive-through will be our second drive-through. Our first drive-through in Oakbrook Terrace opened last April and is the best performing store through COVID because of drive-through, because of suburban location. So I think the suburbs are obviously ready for what we have to offer. If Oakbrook Terrace is any indication, I think Orland Park should exceed it just because there's a greater history in what we do from my baking company days. But we really believe in, and Oakbrook Terrace should show this, that this one unit can do somewhere to 2.2 to 2.5 million annually. So it's really a great investment for us, and I think it's a great investment for Orland Park.
Thank you very much. We're excited to have you.
And now that who gets these?
I guess executive session, we get those. Don't put them too close to George.
Thank you. Welcome to town.
Call roll. Call roll.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Debt modification fine reduction.
I'll entertain a motion to approve a debt modification fine reduction for 1-8249 Breckenridge Boulevard at Orland Park in accordance with the cost structure outlined herein. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Can Stan bring back some coffee? Are there any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
This is the second one we've had in the past month. And just wondering, is this going to be a, because we did the first one, is this going to be a precedent now that we're setting? I understand we want to get this building, this home, you know, to look nice versus the way, the condition it looks right now. So, and I understand, but are we really, is it costing us more money to do all of this and all this work? And then at the end, we turn around and say no. I know in here it says that we're costing, we're covering our costs, but I just have some doubts about this.
I think, I'll save you here, George, we're recovering our costs here. The only thing we're not getting is the punitive damages. So the other ones, we waive those costs. This time, they're agreeing to pay for all of those, all of those costs and all the fees. It's just the punitive damages, which, oh, by the way, it's a new owner. So penalizing a new owner for coming in and cleaning up a place that we've been flooding and everything else. It's got a filled up, a basement filled with water.
I know, I read all that, and.
And the reason there's, you see the second one here is because the board may recall, I believe it was in March, the board put in a place, a process for debt modification. I don't know how it worked prior to that. But what I can, what happens now is if there is any, any debt modification above $5,000, any write-offs.
It has to come before the board.
It has to come, right. And then if it's under that, there is a very, there's a process as well. I don't know how it worked in the past, but I can say that the reason you're seeing now the second one is because of our new process. But I think this is really kind of a win-win solution here.
Right, I understand. We're getting rid of a, you know, something that's.
A new.
An ISO, is now going to be improved with, hopefully be improved. So I just want to make sure that we're getting covered with our costs and all the effort that goes into it and.
Yeah, any, any out-of-pocket costs are being covered.
It's just the punitive damages that were.
Are being reduced, right.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Getzinas.
I had a concern because I looked at this property and didn't see it on the open market, yet the current owner has a potential buyer. So I guess my concern is that it's, you know, an arm's length transaction, that it's not a give and go, that they're getting a discount, you know, so I don't know if anybody can make any. It's not on the open market.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the terms of the.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
I do, I do know that attorney Patrick Collins, who's been working on this for Kleintorpe and Jenkins, is aware of both parties, has been working with them for, I think, about a year to put this transaction together. And then he feels, he has seen a copy of that contract, and he feels like it is a fair transaction.
Okay, that, that's what I have a concern with. But I also concur with trustee Fenton on reducing punitive damages. I understand the rationale, but it just, going forward, going after other property owners that, you know, their properties might be blighted. You know, are we setting precedent by doing this? And that is definitely a concern. You know, you want ordinances that have teeth in it, and by lowering the amount, you know, somebody can come in and say, well, you did it to this guy, why aren't you doing it to me? I think it weakens our position going forward, but I do see, you know, at the end of the day, why it does work out, you know, for all parties. It could be a win-win, but, you know, there's rules, rules are made to be followed and fines are made to be paid. So I have a little bit of an issue with this.
Again, we have, so going back to this, we're getting $93,89 from the, on the lien that we have, plus we're getting an estimated $10,000 to $15,000 to cover, or cover the costs from the buyer as well. So we are, we are covering things. I mean, it's almost, you know, $20,000 to $25,000 roughly we're getting. So it's not, it's not nothing. And so yes, it's important to enforce things, but it's also important to realize that at some point, when you, particularly with a property like this, we need to move forward and get the property cleaned up for everybody else's home values around it. So because this is a good option. Mayor Pico. Trustee Dodge.
It, deal makes sense. I assume that the names of the parties will be public record, correct? That's the way this goes?
Yeah, I think the names of the parties will be public records because there will be a contractual agreement that.
Between them and the village.
Allows the, that allows this lien to survive the closing, and all parties will be a part of that.
Got it. And I think, just picking up the spirit of the, of the discussion, maybe we bring it back to a committee of the whole because I think if I understood where trustee Getzinas was going, in a case like this where you've got an owner who's not doing what they should be doing, and then you've got another party that's coming in trying to get it back on the market, that feels a little bit different than a land, a property owner who's going to stick around and is trying to wiggle out of the punitive piece of this. So maybe we can put a little bit more structure on the guidance to staff as you start to architect these deals. This makes sense. Let's get the property back online. I think everybody agrees with that. But let's tighten it down so that somebody can't just game the system and then say, oh, woe is me, and then start negotiating. I think that's, might have been where trustee Getzinas was going. So maybe we can have that as a board discussion at the committee.
Absolutely. Any other comments on this? Call roll.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Motion carries.
Winter Spring 2021 Recreation in Parks brochure.
Mr. Chairman. Trustee Malani.
I move to approve to publish the Recreation in Parks Winter Spring brochure in a digital format only, notifying residents of the brochure's online date through the mid-October and mid-November water bill cycles.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Fenton.
This would be to staff. How are we going to get to the people who maybe don't have access to online, access to online? Or.
Yeah, we have a plan for that.
Good.
So the notification will be through the water bills. So in the mid-October water bill, we'll have an information flyer in there to notify them that the brochure is digitally online. We can print some copies, and upon request, we can mail those copies to residents.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Chairman. Trustee Malani.
At our last meeting, you know, we, we had a budget adjustment for the senior newsletter, right? And it was $20,000, and we wanted to make sure that we printed them because people like to have them in their hands. But now for the recreation brochure, we want to have it in a digital format. Little inconsistent, so I'm wondering maybe, maybe there's a different way to approach it. Maybe we're talking about sending something out in the water bill. Maybe what we need to send out in the water bill is what is your preference? That way we can budget accordingly. Okay, instead of needing 26,000 of these that we're going to send out, maybe only need 5,000 because they want them in print. We can still save some money, give people what they want, and then if people want it digitally, they can do that as well.
That's a great idea. I mean, we'll, we'll, that's something that we should put into place where, where residents have an opt-out of paper option, so they can get it digitally. So we'll work on putting that process into place, and I think we can use our existing constant contact to put something like that into place. I know in my past life, that was something that we worked on, and the challenge is, is keeping that database clean, but that's something we'll work on going forward.
But if we're sending something out in the water bill, it's just as simple for them to check the box and send it back. So.
Yep.
Just a thought.
We'll work on something like that. It's a great idea. Any other comments? Trustee Calandrello.
This is just going to be temporary until COVID is over, right?
That is the hope, yes.
Okay, because I think it is important to get that book out there. I think parents take it and earmark it and, and stuff like that. So even, even if we have to cut down the mailing to just, people have used rec programs last year. I just feel like some people just take that book and keep it in a drawer. I might know when it lives in my house that does that. I think a lot of parents do that.
I think we find too that it's an important marketing tool. When we ask people who register for programs how they heard about the program, the number one thing, thing they say is through the brochure.
And believe it or not, it's not just parents that do that. It's adults that don't have kids in their house that do that too.
Absolutely.
Because seniors use it, non-seniors use it, a lot of people use it. I think the issue here is that the programs have been, if I, if I understand correctly, the programs have been changing rapidly because of, because of COVID and because of restrictions and lockdowns and changes. And so since that changes so rapidly, we don't want to, it's, it's not a cost issue so much as it's a, it might be completely ineffective and completely changed, correct?
That's correct. When we put out the fall brochure, we found out that shortly after we put it out, a lot of the information was incorrect. So this way we can keep it up, up to speed.
Okay. Any other comments? Call roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Conservation at Home Program, Chicago Region Trees Initiative.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy.
I move to authorize supporting Conservation at Home and the Chicago Region Trees Initiative by authorizing the attached letter be distributed to property owners within the Village of Orland Park.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello.
Aye.
Trustee Getzinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye. Do you have any speakers? Anybody here to speak? Board comments, trustee Fenton.
Yes, I'd like to let everybody know that last Friday was the Devil in White City program at the museum. Because of COVID, we have to change the amount of attendees that are allowed. We had to cut it in half to accommodate for social distancing, but it was still a sold-out event. We had 27 guests at the event. Then on Saturday at the museum, we had our first birthday party for an American Girl theme. We had six girls from the ages of five to nine who enjoyed crafts bingo and a tea party with their dolls. I'm sure the guys up here are really encouraged about that one. The parents also enjoyed the atmosphere and said it was a perfect space for the girls to have a memorable party. Our next program out at the museum is called Ghost Roads of Illinois. It'll be Friday, October 23rd at 6:30 PM. Be sure to register for this. Also, if you get a chance, go over to the Bowley Farm. They're still open till the end of October. They close on the 31st. If you're looking for pumpkin, gourds, or any other fall plants and vegetables, they're still open on 150 First, just by 80th Avenue, by the fire station. And also, if you want to go out and see some beautiful things, go out to the Stella Wagon Farm and the Nature Center. Both are really turning beautiful at this time of the year, especially with this great weather that we've had. It's great for the photosynthesis of all of the plant life.
Trustee Dodge.
Just a couple of comments. I'll pick up where Kathy left off, that this is definitely a beautiful time of year in Orland. And it's kind of nice to see all of the subdivisions that have mature trees and the colors that pop and fall. So it's definitely a, a great time of year. And just a brief comment, George and I spoke earlier, that we're in that season where signs start popping up in public rights away. And I think Public Works got out there on 104th, and I just hope that we maintain our vigilance letting these campaigns that are outside of Orland understand where they can or cannot put their signs. It's always been a, an issue that it's well-intentioned use of the First Amendment, but they're putting their signs in the wrong place. So, you know, George, it's, it's forever cycle, as you know. Signs magically spropple up like dandelions on Friday night when they think Public Works isn't working, and then the signs sit there in the public right away till Monday morning. So I'm not quite sure if we've got a better way to, to solve that, but it's certainly that, that season. And then just, you know, as we go into the fall, I mean, clearly the numbers with, with COVID infection rates are going up. And then yet again today, the CDC published new guidelines that I'd call everybody's attention to about the risk with aerosolized transfer of the, of the virus. So as a country and a community, we're certainly not out of this, and just always encourage people to take all of the science and new data into the consideration as they behave themselves in public. Thank you.
Trustee Calandrello.
No comment. Have a good weekend, everyone. Have a good week, everyone.
Did you say no comment?
No comment. Have a good week, everyone.
Okay. Trustee Healy.
Over the weekend, we witnessed President Trump's battle with COVID. I'm glad to see he's, it looks like he's on his way to defeating it. And I just want to say, he's, he wanted, he should, we should pray for him and for all those other victims of the, the Chinese flu that comes in here, and everybody can use a prayer now and then. So I hope we can all pray for him. Thanks.
Trustee Getzinas.
Just wanted to thank the representative from the Crisis Center for coming to the meeting and the board for passing a resolution for a very important topic. I would encourage all to go on their Facebook page and to support the organization in any way. meeting, and the board for passing a resolution for a very important topic. I would encourage all to go on their Facebook page and to support the organization in any way they can.